Good evening. It is 6:02 PM on Tuesday, February 13th. We are in the National North Board Room and I am calling this meeting of the Policy Committee to order. And then I have to actually write things down while I'm talking. I forgot. All right, 6:02. All right, so present, we have Ms. Darling.
Here.
Ms. Lampier.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Poska. It looks like we have a bunch of guests tonight. And I'll just have people introduce themselves when they come up to speak on their individual thing. Oh, and Heather Raymond, that's me. All right, so we had JKA, which we brought back for more discussion, but I've had a request to do things out of order this evening so that we can have some discussion about data and IT stuff with Mr. Rodriguez. So did we want to take the E's first?
I think it would be easier to take care of the D's first.
Okay.
And I think there might be a little bit more discussion about the E's. I am making a recommendation, I'm asking for this committee to also bring forward to the full board on Monday, the opportunity to waive the first reading for all of these policies and go right to a second reading on Monday due to some of the time sensitivity of a couple of these policies, which we'll get into when we discuss the policies. So please consider that as we go forward.
Okay. Oh, I forgot, Mr. Rodriguez was here for the purchasing policies too. Sorry, Mr. Rodriguez. Welcome.
Thank you.
So having said that, we'll skip over JKA for now and we'll go to DJ, which is purchasing. And we asked both, my goodness, Mr. Donovan and Mr. Rodriguez to look at this policy and make sure that it's still meeting the district's needs. And there's a bunch of new recommendations for all of the policies tonight except for JKA regarding data privacy that Mr. Rodriguez can explain much better than I can.
I'm going to ask Mr. Rodriguez to get into this a moment, just to give some background. Earlier today, there was a finance meeting. One of the topics that was discussed was the purchase of a new software platform for our bus transportation system. The impetus behind some of these policy changes is so that the purchase for that platform aligns with what's in our policy. As Mr. Rodriguez sat down with me and tried to explain this to me, it was, you know, kind of an education for me. It was me, like, talking to him. And as he said, it's like when I'd sit in one of those education meetings and you use all your acronyms. Well, now I got to sit in one of his meetings with all his acronyms. So I'm going to kind of pass it over to Greg to kind of describe it in layman's terms so we know what's going on.
Sure. So revenge is best served at policy meetings. So thank you for having me. So the part of the DJ policy we're looking at is how we vet our productive, our productivity software. So going forth, we are looking at transportation software. So that is considered productivity software and it's noneducational. So we're requiring what is called the SOC 2 Type 2 report, which we ask companies to, who are considering for purchasing their software. It's a lengthy report, usually around 150 pages, but it describes their security controls and how they hold their privacy, you know, standards with their privacy policies and their terms and all that. So it actually goes through what their audit is and they share it with us, usually through an NDA that we have to sign. So, and if a company doesn't have a SOC 2 Type 2 report, we can request something similar like use a questionnaire or myself and the network administrator or assistant administrator within the department can ask them a series of questions to ensure that they actually, you know, have decent security to protect our student data. So that's kind of the, you know, why we need this, especially with the busing software, because we're not going to be hosting it. This is going to be a cloud-based, which is, believe me, much better. But so this is, it's, there is some time sensitivity with this policy, with DJ and DJB.
If we don't add this requirement to our policy, does that mean that we cannot require this report from people bidding on the transportation software?
The, we can, we can, that was pre, when the LP went out, this was not a requirement in it. It was kind of an after the fact that we asked for it. We did look at, I'm sure the recommendation was already made to the board about the software that is being used. If, if I think it's a software that, if I think it's a software that's being used, they did provide us with this report and they did meet the sufficient requirements for security.
Right, I think that recommendation's coming Monday and I was on the road, so I didn't watch Finance.
And I think this is probably, if I could say, it's about best practice going forward to include these in, as part of our vetting process.
Yep, yep.
Yes. So I read through DJ and then I read through DJB. And in DJB, which is purchasing procedure, it mentions that the Director of Technology will consult with the COO to verify the information the provider supplies meet or exceed data privacy and security. And we don't have that added sentence in DJ, the first policy on purchasing, after the new paragraph they were adding. I don't know if we need to have that in there because there's no mention of the IT Director in DJ.
I think when we get into DJB, DJB gets more specific of the procedures that we go through, whereas purchasing provides a kind of a bigger umbrella of what we're looking at. But you're absolutely right, Ms. Lampier, and you get into DJB, it is more specific. And I think, you know, what we've done here is exactly what has occurred. Mr. Rodriguez has made the recommendation to Mr. Donovan about what this best practice should be going forward, what should be included as we're trying to vet these platforms and these different purchases we're trying to make.
So as long as it's included in the second policy, we don't really need to add that line in the first policy?
I don't think.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Okay, so I'll make the motion to send DJ to the full board for approval.
Second.
And then just a note to ourselves that if we want to have the full board look at it Monday night and not, and act on it Monday night, we would need to make a motion at the full board to suspend the rules for a second reading. And then a majority of the board would have to agree that they want to and move it. So, and I'll leave it to admin to make the case for it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Timeliness. All right, so all in favor of sending DJ to the full board, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then I'll move to send DJB to the full board. I know we asked one question on it. Were there other questions on DJB? There were no other legal changes, no laws that impacted this one. This was an admin request. All right, so can I have a second for DJB?
Second.
All in favor of sending DJB to the full board?
Aye.
Aye, okay. And then, so these are the, these are the long ones and thank you, Mr. Rodriguez, for being here.
No problem.
So, I think we kind of go together. So EHAA is Employee Use of Network Research, Network Resource and Telecommunication Systems, NRT Systems. And so this one, you'll notice, the one, two, three, fourth bullet point is all new, all in red. And it talks about privacy regarding emails. And I had a ton of questions for Mr. Poska when we talked about this in review and a ton of kind of examples about things that someone might do with their email. Like, for example, if I'm registering for something, which frequently happens, if I get an email at my, my school board email about a webinar that's coming up and I want to register for it, sometimes I'll email it to my personal email to remind me to put it on my home calendar. And I don't think that that would be allowed under this policy anymore, anymore than emailing students' personal information to your own personal thing. But I would really like to get some clarity so that everyone understands where the guardrails are on using your personal emails on district computers and sharing of information between district emails and personal emails.
I'm going to let Mr. Rodriguez jump into that. And I think a lot of this, you know, we combined all these policies together today so Mr. Rodriguez could speak to all of them, particularly these E policies are, the recommendations are based upon, kind of best practice, based upon the cybersecurity attack that we withered last year. So trying to put some more preventative measures in place to avoid that happening again. And Mr. Rodriguez, if you just pick it up from there.
Sure. So part of good IT security is not only the technical controls we put in, like email filters, firewalls, spam, all that stuff, but it's also, it also comes to the top of policy. And this is what guides what we actually use to limit our risk. And these policies are directly related to limiting our risk and shrinking that. Unfortunately, a lot of cyber incidents occur at the person level. It's not just, you know, a hack or something. But especially with this, the overarching, even federal law that I have in mind here is FERPA. Like, and we have to, we, I feel that we have to do a better job of abiding by the FERPA laws. And this, this addition to the EHAA policy does that by not allowing members with, employees of the school district with Nashua.edu and NSD42.net to forward emails to a personal email. Because even with right to knows, we have to consider that every email that we have is considered confidential. It has to go through a review before it is released to whomever is requesting certain emails or documents because they have to be redacted. This is a way of skirting the system and this has to be eliminated. So we cannot allow, because we could see personnel information going out, if we could see student information going out, all of these are, should be kept within the world of Nashua, in Nashua's world. So this is, you know, a direct response to the incident. We have data loss prevention software, but it doesn't catch stuff like this. If we, if we forward this out, that usually catches social security numbers, credit card numbers and this, and other things. But it doesn't capture information that may be sensitive. And that's a software thing, that's a technical thing that we're talking about. This is a policy that, with hopefully some teeth, that will stop employees from forwarding out emails or capturing on a type of media like a USB, a CD, or a storage device and put it in a different, in a different location outside of the district. So that is what this, the soul of this, this addition to the policy is.
So can you run us through some examples? Because I'm thinking about things that happen in a normal working environment. Like, we're going to have hot look lunch on Friday as a team building activity and you're emailing everybody on that and I've signed up for chili or whatever. I can't send that home to myself or I can't send it out to my spouse that'd be like, hey, this is what everyone's bringing, what do you want to cook? Right?
I don't want to add exceptions, like stuff like that because it doesn't, because then you're looking at, oh, this is, I'm trying to make this as black and white as possible.
Nothing goes out of your...
Yeah, whatever's, whatever's in Nashua, because you don't know who, you don't know who, what can be responded to it. It's always the possibility of something else going on. So like I said, we're trying to limit our risk, you know, and potential for lawsuit. So like, that's, that's really the goal of this, is really protecting the district.
And you had said something about flash drives, et cetera. So in the past, as a board member, I've gotten pretty extensive right to know requests and I would download all of that information on a flash drive and give it to usually Tara or an attorney.
Right, yeah, that's, yeah, that's...
That's different? Or that's the same?
This is, this is like, so this is taking sensitive information and using it as a personal means. So that's, that's kind of like what, that's, that's taken, that's taken district information and using it for a right to know request.
What about circumstances where there's some sort of disciplinary action or an issue that one of our employees has, you know, with a supervisor or whatever, and they want to forward it to the union or to a labor attorney or to some other person to get outside advice on what to do about the situation?
Then I would, I'd probably have them instruct them to talk with an attorney about that or if they, if they're already in consultation with that. Because they, because we're, especially if it's a personnel dispute, the person on that also has their rights too. So we don't want to infringe on other people's rights for that.
Okay. Does the union have, what's the union email address?
Sure, it's NTU.
That it's a separate domain?
Yes, it is a separate domain.
So would this policy interfere with people's protected right to communicate with their union reps?
I don't believe so. They should, you should be able to connect with their, the union rep.
But not forward them actual...
If they wanted, I mean, they wanted, this is, if they wanted to use their, probably their personal account to, to email their, their union rep, like, let's say, like, heatherraymond@gmail.com and have it to the NTU email account, that's fine as long as, you know, I can't police, we don't want to police that part of it because it's a personal account going to another email outside of the Nashua domain.
All right. Who else has questions?
I don't know. Do you have, have you given thought to how this would be policed? In what kind of, is, what the consequences would be if someone is violating the policy?
I believe the, in the Data Governance Plan, it's not on this sheet, but there is language on there that, that states, or it's even, if you go down to the bottom, it says violation of this policy may result in disciplinary action up to including termination. So that's the last bullet point on this.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And my, Mr. Marku from the union is also here, just to clarify. So one of the concerns that he had shared with me prior to the meeting was staff members trying to access, say, X2 or Aspen from their home computer to update a grade or to utilize that to, you know, access Google Classroom to update a lesson. Is there any issue with that?
No, there is no issue with that because if, I would say if there's issue if they're using it, they're downloading their student data, their classroom data and then using it for personal use after, selling the information, that's it. You know, like, we give the ability to sign on and for people to do work at home if they choose. So this wouldn't be any different because you're using within, you know, your work, you know, credentials to do those things. So my personal email wouldn't be able to log into X2 or use any of that, that information because it's just not allowed. But that wouldn't be interfering if, or like infringing on this policy right here.
And just as a follow-up, you had many, many meetings with the cyber experts there and this was one of their recommendations to kind of limit external access to our system?
Yeah. It's not just that, it's also best practice. Like, that's, that's, again, we, limiting things that go out of our doing for FERPA personnel HIPAA reasons even too. So like, that's, these are things we want to stay off the front page of newspapers with.
I asked this question in the Finance Committee meeting earlier. We had approved a new telecommunications system at our previous Finance Committee meeting and I was just wondering, there was talk of cell phones being used and I was just wondering how that would be impacted with this policy.
Yeah, so that, that would be a bit different just because this app would be a district app that we're going to be using and it's contained within the application in this app. Whatever happens there, like, let's say a phone call is made by a staff member to a family, which is, we're going to be upgrading our phone system to cloud-based, just to give a little more background. But that is 100% auditable and it's like, this phone would be on our phone, but it's, it's contained within the app on the phone. So it wouldn't be a personal cellphone number making a call, it would actually be a district number making a call. So it complies with, with privacy.
So if you needed to know what was said on a phone call or if you needed to know what was texted, you'd be able to do that without going into someone's personal cellphone device?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, we can see, the calls aren't recorded, so I don't want to be misquoted there, that, like, a text from the application to a family would be recorded. That's, that's auditable right there.
Please call extension 2504. Chris Nodick, 2504.
I should note, since we just had that announcement, that it is open house night here at North tonight. I was saying when I came in, this is the first time I have missed open house in my children's academic career. Like, I've gone to every single one since kindergarten, but I'm not meeting with my kids' parent or my kids' teachers tonight and it's freaking me out. But we will probably have interruptions when they ring the bell for parents to change classes, so that'll be fun for us. Okay, just, I know we have a few guests here. Were there public comments on this policy? Does anyone have any objections to allowing public comments as we talk about the policy? Okay. Any other questions by us before we do that? Okay. You remember the...
They know who I am.
Yeah, just say who you are.
Good evening. Adam Marku. I live at Forge Delory Lane. I'm president of the Nashville Teachers Union. I appreciate the opportunity to have my, and Mr. Rodriguez and I talked in the audience, Mr. Poska and I, but questions that Ms. Raymond asked triggered other questions that I had. And I fully respect the district's and the board's authority to do this and I'm not challenging that piece. My goal is to educate myself so that I can help educate my colleagues come on Tuesday. We as teachers often email with parents. Our progress reports and report cards come through X2 now. Is teachers communicating to a parent in email now a problem?
Nope, that's not, that's not a problem.
Is human resources communicating to a employee's home email when they're on leave about their benefits in leave now subject to this? And I ask that because policy at one point was if you were on an approved leave regardless of the type, your email was shut off, which I had whole issues with that, but that's another day. I'm just trying to make sure, because we now use a platform for FMLA leave that is not the old school, fill out the paper and do it, and make sure that, and I'm sure you have, I just have to ask the question. And then back to Ms. Raymond's question about communicating with me or my union colleagues. There are times that emails that have been created on the district Nashua.edu or NSD42 is substantial evidence in our case. Yes. Do you fit in the shoes of your child?
My child is bigger than me now.
Okay, so this is where I was going. And I know Mr. Rodriguez had said consultant attorney, but...
If, if there was, I would say if there was a lawsuit or something, or a pending something, like, there are legal holds that are put on accounts for that, for that reason, on the, again, the technical things that we can do, so.
So just to piggyback on that, I'm thinking about grievances. It's not uncommon for the board to hear a grievance brought by one of the unions because there's been a disagreement between an employee and their manager about whatever disciplinary action. So typically, we get a packet from usually the district, but sometimes also the grievance with a number of emails, et cetera, that were discussing the incident. Would the union still be able to access that or the employee? Like, how would the employee gather the materials they need for their grievance?
I'm hoping the emails were conducted through the Nashua.edu email domain, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Right, but my, to answer the question, my email, president@nashua.edu is not tied to the Nashua.edu domain and it is common that when we have grievances, wherever they're related, for the member in question to forward me the communications that they've had that are in question, that I need or my grievance people need to pursue whatever we're doing. Now, this is typically in consult with a building principal or the superintendent. So it's like, they know it's coming per se at times in that we, it has been past practice to gather that information. This makes me, for my own Marku A@nashua.edu, I get emails all the time that I don't use and I forward them to the union email, so I have them, just like you said with, so whatever the district decides, is the district's right. I want to make sure that if we need that evidence from that email account about how we go about doing it without violating whatever policies are in place. We traditionally, the NTU does not issue right to know requests. We have, but in the past, we've been able to get what we needed by saying, hey, this is what we're looking for, can we get this? And if it's as simple as that moving forward, fine. I do know, and again, I deal with a lot of realms of people, that there is some concern that once you say something, that all of a sudden, something happens with your email. So, I'm, the general statement, I'm not making any accusations against our team.
Clarify that though, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not understanding what you're...
Well, they're afraid that if I say something and it's about, that I have things in my email that my email's going to get shut off. There are policies around when you can and can't do that. There's, so I deal with people from all the aspects of everything and these are things that I hear as concern, so they want to get those things to me as soon as possible. But I don't want people violating district policy either. And how do we accommodate their right to union representation and provide me with documentation without violating FERPA or whatever else maybe?
So, I mean, I, for me, on a, on a, just a procedure way, if it's, if they want to communicate with you, I think they should just communicate with you through the Marku A@nashua.edu as a, if that's just a process thing. And if they, if they have that information, they need to go there. I know you say you don't use it, but could you use it?
I will not use it for union business. I do not want the district having access to my union email account. And that's, just to be honest, I don't.
Figuratively, I would imagine that there's some required separation there too because the Marku A is for teacher...
Correct.
Marku and the union email is for union president Marku. Can we do a bullet or a line that says that communications with the union are contractually protected?
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, yeah.
And I'm, I'm, I meet with Dr. Andre tomorrow for our, and my, my ask was going to be that when this policy is approved, could we have, how to understand this policy for the layman people, as we talked about, the, the purchasing and the SOC, whatever those SOC things were or whatever. I just want people to understand it and if I don't understand it, I can't help them understand it. So I want to make sure that we set everyone up to understand the rationale and then how to make sure that they're following the policy.
Thank you, Mr. Marku.
Thank you.
So I, one of the things I like about having guests at the meeting meetings is that it's a lot less formal than at our full board meetings where people talk and we listen and we take notes, but here we can kind of have a little bit more of a working session, which I like. But if we did that at the full board meetings, we'd be here all night. So, so I'm wondering if to cover the union communications, if we need to add a line, either a bullet point or maybe even right at the end of the... either a bullet point or, um, maybe even right at the end of the, the red line that, um, that contractual, like, that, um, communications with your union representative are contractually protected? So I don't know, I'm not a lawyer, so.
Could it be, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, so it could be some, any Nashua.edu or NSD forty-two.net email? This excludes any communications between Nashua.edu and NSD dot forty-two dot net to NTU, union executives?
Yeah.
It would also be, well, this covers all of our unions, so it would have to be the AFSMI, et cetera.
Exactly, so I think we have to wordsmith that a little bit better.
I would, I would just add another line to that, that would, union-related business.
So.
Yes.
But where should we put that? Because we can add it now so that it's.
Yeah, it could be, I would probably, uh, add it after, um.
We add a bullet right after that?
After the red line and additional bullet?
Yes, and maybe the.
There are sub-bullet, they put on like a indented bullet on that one? I don't know. APA.
All right. And what did you just say? That it will not?
Yeah, I would say, uh, for, this, this excludes union-related business for, uh, all, I don't know, CBA groups or whatever.
Okay, maybe not a bullet, maybe just a line.
A line, yeah.
Yep, this excludes.
Union-related business with the various union groups. Not sure about the union groups.
With.
All bargaining groups?
Yeah. Oh, uh, do we have to say Nashua, just school district bargaining groups?
Yes.
I would say specific to that. Be with their union groups, so we're being specific about, you know, so it's not just, you know.
With, yes, with their specific bargaining unit.
With, okay, with employees. Employees apostrophe, yes, apostrophe, yes, or.
S apostrophe.
S apostrophe, that's right. I'm sorry, I'm writing in the, where the binder clip is, and it's not easy. This excludes union-related business with employees', um, bargaining group. That satisfy?
I would say so, yeah. Oh, okay.
Okay, so we're going to add this line, this excludes union-related business with employees bargaining groups immediately after the red. Okay, so I move, I'm going to just make the motion, and then if we have more changes, we can, but I just want to make sure I have it in the motion. So I move that we send EHAA to the full board with the change I just read. And I wrote down on the sheet for Ms. Cancelus, so she can see it. Hopefully, my handwriting is legible.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Darling. Okay, further questions? Oh, okay. Okay, so all in favor of sending EHAA as amended to the full board, say aye?
Aye.
And so now we have EHAB, which is, um, also pretty long. Um, and this is the, uh, data governance and, oh, my, data governance and security, um, policy. And you'll see that there's a couple of areas of red here. So we've added a definition of cybersecurity incident. Um, we've gotten rid of the, the year twenty nineteen, because that's the last time we've played with this, and now it's, um, we need to have an update to the data governance plan every year at the end, by the end of June. It doesn't have to be in June, it could be any month that we want, as long as it doesn't go more than twelve months. Okay, um.
And just as a precursor, so, you know, again, as Mr. Rodriguez alluded to, some of this is in response to the, the incident last year. EHAB had been updated in, by the, uh, NHSBA in August of twenty twenty-two, and then September of twenty twenty-three. So what we're bringing, bringing forth here are some of the recommendations from the NHSBA, so that's why we're asking to adopt this policy in its entirety. And we've made some small adjustments based upon some of the specifics of what they're asking for, as Ms. Raymond just alluded to with some of the dates. I'm gonna pass the, you know, Ms. Raymond, you can continue going, I'm sure Mr. Rodriguez can further expand.
So the next piece I want to draw our attention to is on page three under G. We've added a section here that says, notwithstanding the prohibition on the use of applications that store, collect, or share personally identifiable information concerning students. And then it says, students participating in career exploration or career technical education may, with written parental consent, register for technology platforms and services to be used as a part of the student's approved program of study. So, uh, this is in response to, um, SB two thirteen, which was passed this summer and signed by the governor in August. And basically, that, that bill altered RSA one eighty-nine sixty-six, RSA one ninety-eight seventy, and RSA one ninety-nine sixty-six, which all have to do with third-party vendors. And the idea behind it is that in some of our, um, CTE classes especially, um, kids are being helped to create resumes, to create LinkedIn profiles. I don't, I don't know what other apps it is.
Yeah, so.
It's most of the testimony.
Just by reading this, so this is a practice that, uh, we were, we were instructed by the SDPC, which they're, they're a third-party, uh, service that, that kind of helps us, um, with like contract negotiations with, uh, educational applications. So this is actually different than the productive, productivity applications that we talked about earlier with SOC two type two reports. So, um, this, this is for, let's say, a, a good example is Autodesk, which is a CTE program, that is for enterprise level, not built for school districts. So they have different, uh, they don't like to adhere to, let's say, privacy requirements. This gives actually written, this actually gives consent, but with, with parental consent for the students to actually use this enterprise software. So they gain those on-the-job skills that, that'll be very important to, you know, either getting a job out of college, I mean, out of high school, or even going, applying that through college. So this is, it's, it's more for career-ready applications, uh, for use.
Is Autodesk used in the machining program?
I think it's in the CAD program.
CAD.
Yep, yep.
And so I think we still need parental permission. So when a student registers for these classes, they will get a permission slip. They have to get signed by their parent, allowing them to do this. And if parents have an objection, then there has to be a meeting of the minds between the parent and the teacher about, is there an alternative assignment that could teach them those skills? Or does the student need to take an alternative class?
Yep, so the, so what the teacher also to provide is, is a, it's a cover letter of what this, this application actually does. And that's actually part of the written, uh, consent process. So, um, it's, it's a two-step thing, actually three steps if you consider like what needs to be signed. But, um, it, it's just a way of saying, you know, the liability is, is off of, of the, of the application if something were to happen. As opposed to the other educational apps that sign a dated privacy agreement outlined in, uh, in RSA one eight nine six six.
And I actually had a question about this, um, and it's in regards to, um, our Chromebooks. So we have now, um, given Chromebooks to all of our high schoolers and middle schoolers, but a lot of times, they're not able to download particular apps and do some things because of our, uh, I wouldn't call them parental controls, but that's not the right name, or.
Yeah, technical controls is fine.
Technical controls.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The policies, yeah.
What happens in those circumstances for these classes that are using LinkedIn or Autodesk or whatever? Do they?
So LinkedIn is just a website, LinkedIn is just a website, they can, they can reach LinkedIn if they, if they wanted to. Um, some, some applications, uh, need to be manually added, but those, that's a process that's done, um, with a request and, and with a help desk ticket, and, uh, we'll see if it is actually available to use. So one of the things about Chromebooks is they're different than like a Windows, so it, it's, everything's run on, through a website. So as opposed to, uh, in, in applications and extensions is what they're run, as opposed to an executable program actually on their physical device. So, um, the capabilities, some, one of it's lightweight, like we see with the Chromebook, some of it's heavyweight, like we see in the, in, in the, like a Windows device. So the functionality is different. So there, there is, there are limitations to both, um, but, uh, they don't, they, they, they kind of can do the same thing, but they, they do it in different ways, is how I can explain it better. So some may have the capability to do it, or some may actually have the application available through the Chrome Store download, uh, that we can actually, uh, send out to, to the devices if needed.
But that's something that the, that the instructor needs to request from us.
Yeah, we, and we, there's a, we have a, um, uh, app betting process that's, we, we constantly, it, it's constantly evolving. We had a rudimentary one, uh, back in two thousand nineteen, when the data governance plan was presented, uh, revamped last year. And it goes through more of a curriculum basis now as opposed to a technical, because, as Mr. Poska alluded to earlier, when, you know, listening to educators speak about education stuff, I'm not, I'm not understanding why like, as that, how that applies to curriculum. So, uh, we want to make sure that it, it actually aligns with what the instructor or the teacher is trying to teach, and how that aligns to the curriculum first, before it actually goes through the privacy and the security settings, uh, after that process. So we're, we're actually becoming, the technical side is actually the last step, uh, in the approval process.
Um, and then I just had two other questions on this. And I've, one of them just went right out of my head. Hold on, it's gone now. Um, so oh, my other question was about, um, social media in general. Because my notes from SB two thirteen, in my notes, in the hearings and whatnot, some of my notes, I had noted something about, um, the district. There are some protections in, um, in one ninety-eight seventy, I think it's one ninety-eight seventy, uh, four B that protected students' social media from district, basically district overreach and that. But I don't see it in this policy, and so I'm just curious if there's overlap there. Um, where, um, my notes from the, the hearing were that if students are using social media at home, like, assuming with parents' permission, that they're not gonna end up being, that school can't discipline them for that unless they're using it to do something that's related to school. Like, if you're bullying someone that started at school and then you continue it, we can, we can do that. But if you're like, I don't know, twerking at a basketball game, that's none of our business, right?
Right, uh, we, we don't, we don't have that. I always say that's at the building disciplinary level. I, if they come to that case, but usually we've seen, we've had to work with law enforcement for stuff like that, to, you know, to help them find something if there is something. So, um, this, that, there's no overreach right there, like, that's, social media is something that we actually don't allow students' social media on, on our network for, for reasons like that. So, um, just because it's like, keep it at home if you want to put it, if you want to use a cellular network. When you use a cellular network to go on social media, that's fine, but, uh, not on Nashua, not on Nashua's network.
Okay, I mean, I know when you're logged in as a guest on our wifi, you can't access a lot of social media anywhere. Like magic, if you come in here, Facebook disappears. All right.
ChatGPT now works, by the way, on here. In case you're, as of our last policy meeting, oddly enough. Before that, it kept kicking me off if I tried to go to ChatGPT while here.
Well, we approved.
I just thought it was great that something updated that fast.
Right, so, oh, that, how does this interact with, like, ChatGPT and AI? Because we approved an AI policy, uh, a month ago that said that, um, teachers and parents get to decide whether or not kids use AI and had a, some rules and boundaries on that. So how does this inter- interact with that?
Are we talking about, talking about G, right, the, under that line?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think, as we talked about with the policy, it's how is the teacher providing the support and the instructions that, that AI is being utilized in the class? It's just not, go play with it. It's maybe, you know, can we, can we, we use that for the, you know, the curriculum and learning purpose that it's provided for? So it's really directed and it's under the, in the guise and the guardrails of how the teacher is utilizing that for their classroom instruction.
Okay, so, um, just double checking to make sure that all the legal references. Do you think we need to add? Eighty-nine one eighty-nine.
I do want to say that, just, I just want to emphasize this part of the policy, which is on the first page and the, and the definitions that, um, this does. Uh, we do want to include like, what we're, if, if we want to discuss more about what a cybersecurity incident is. Because, you, you know, the, we look at confidentiality, we want to ensure that, you know, student data, personnel data, information that is, that is considered very confidential is as, is what it is, it's being held at a confidential level, and that, that includes every district personnel. So that, from, from teachers, you know, administrators, custodians, IT folk, like, that, that's, that's what it means. So we want to keep everything we can confidential through our resources that we have throughout the district. Integrity is making sure our data stays, um, the same, not the same, but it's, it's, it's held with integrity. Nothing's modified, um, in a malicious way. And availability is, let's say, somebody attacks our network and brings our systems down, that's what availability, availability would mean. So, um, we want to make sure that if these things happen, a cybersecurity incident is, is enacted, and that's, we have the steps processed through the data governance plan.
I think, great. Any other questions? This one was a long one. Okay, uh, the only other question that I had was on I, data retention and deletion, which, we didn't make any changes here since the last time we approved this, uh, which was two years ago. But it just says that, um, that there'll be an established retention schedule. Do we know what that is? Or do I need to pull up the data governance plan?
I, I think, well, I would argue it's an EHABR, I think it's, God, I don't want to misspeak, but seven years is, is rings a bell for some things, but, but I, but we do have records that need to be kept indefinitely for.
Right, like student, student.
Student records, right, right. I, I don't know what the statute it is on other records, but, uh, um, because it's just not as specific, but there, like I said, there's litigation holds and right to knows and stuff like that, um, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, great. So, um, I move that we send EHAA to the full board.
Second.
I think that was EHAB, I'm sorry.
Oh, I move that we send EHAB.
Guess I'll second still.
Thank you. I, it's right here on my sheet, I just wrote it down, I don't know. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now let's go back, and we appreciate everyone's patience with this. Thank you so much, Mr. Rodriguez. Um, let's go all the way back to the beginning of the agenda to JKAA. And so we talked about this last month. Um, we do have some guests tonight, we had some, uh, questions or comments on it. And then I asked, um, one of our, um, district, um, attorney, my district attorneys, a school district attorney, um, attorney Bennett to come, because I know that we had some questions about personnel, privacy laws, and other labor laws. Um, so we will, we'd like to do is open it up to, um, discussion about the things that we brought back from the full board about. Allow for public comments if there are any, and then we can do a non, we can break into a non-meeting with the attorney for attorney questions. Does that, do you have any objections to that? No? Okay, so my notes are, my note was, ask about the final investigation report, and will parents get a copy? And then we were talking about, um, you know, best interest of the child, um, last time. Does anybody have any other comments or concerns on the rest of the policy other than the, um, what page is that, the last page under?
Um, I do, actually.
All right, good, go.
So, on page ten of eleven of this policy, there is, under K, prohibition against retaliation or harassment, the dissemination of policy is also written in there, and then doubled again as L.
Oh.
Um, that being said, the dissemination of policy should be looked at because, um, it says that a copy of this policy shall be provided to the parent, guardian, or legal representative of each full or part-time student upon enrollment and annually thereafter printed in each student's handbook. Additionally, it's online, blah, blah, blah. I get it's online. We all know how I feel about that not being nearly accessible enough for some of our families. We do not print handbooks anymore. We do not print policy books. There, I've, I've asked Tara a couple of times over the last two years. I've I've asked Tara a couple of times over the last two years if there was any way to get even a binder together of all of our policies printed, and there is not. Which is crazy on so many levels for me as it is, but that being said, we can't say we print it in students' handbooks if if we don't.
I think, right, I mean, I think the printed means included in the student handbook, but we could change the word to include.
I would love it if we just changed it to a printed handbook, but yes, that works. I would like to actually challenge the idea that we only give it annually and say that shouldn't we give a copy of this policy as well as a copy of the, you know, the how to file a complaint should you question things to the parent upon either the first incident or five oh four or an I E P meeting in a way that is at a accessible level for the average literacy level in our city? Because I can tell you right now, the average person in Nashua is not reading this and understanding it. I don't understand half of it and had to talk to a lawyer.
We had a we had a policy on I E Ps and stuff. I forget what the number was, but I wanted to have a change to include the information about the Disability Rights Center and stuff like that. And we were not able to add that to the actual policy, but we attacked the the policy after that, after that, like, you know, if it's B or A or R, the policy immediately after that gives all the numbers that people would need to call if they had an issue.
The problem is half those numbers are, I mean, you you remember, I'm assuming, what it's like to go through that process. Your first time, you're scared, you have this whole team of people that you're hoping to God has your back, but any advocate you call, their first word is get a lawyer. It's it's really hard to go through as it is. If we can't even include, you know, our policies around, you know, how we're using restraint and seclusion during an I E P or five oh four meeting in a way the parent understands, we're doing a disservice to them.
So I think it was, I think it was A C and A C E, right? Because when we were talking this time, it was about this time last year, we're talking about
How do you remember all of those? Would you like to make a a binder of all of our policies? Because you might be the only one who could.
So actually, when I got on the board six years ago, I printed out all of our policies, right? And I made myself a binder and, you know, it took quite a bit of ink and stuff. But because we're constantly updating the policies, it became time prohibitive for me to always every month be like ripping out policies and reprinting them and putting new ones in like became easier just to access them on the website. But but I agree, I know Ms. Lampier was working on how do we make our I E P process more accessible to people? And I I don't know what the answer is.
I do know that the department. I can't remember if it was the Department of Special Education or the Department of Education, I'll have to look through my emails. But one of them does now have a little booklet that you are able to print at home that is much more understandable. I would love to see us take that and like mold it into Nashua's current policies and give that to parents in the beginning of the process, especially where it came from higher up than us. But either way, when it comes to this policy specifically, I just want to make sure that the parents are understanding.
The response that I got when I asked was that we cannot change legal language into simplified language because that will, in some cases, you know, it won't, it won't provide the true meaning of the of the legal document. And also that we could not obligate teachers to give this at every I E P meeting because it's not required by law and because it would be another thing that if if the parents were upset about the I E P, they'd say, oh, I didn't get this.
So I'm not gonna lie, I would be way, no, 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 not would be, am way more upset at finding out that there have been violations against children's bodily autonomy in our schools with parents getting little to no information about what their rights are to the point where that is that that to me is a far bigger issue that we have than did they get an extra piece of paper at a meeting? And I know every I E P meeting I've gone to, I have gotten offered that stupid dang booklet and I've refused it every single god dang time because it's a waste of trees for me, for me specifically. I'm sure it's great for other people out there that don't have access to it in another way. But if if we're afraid of breaking down a language to make it accessible to the average person, then that tells me that we're trying to hide.
I think, to me, I think the issue with rewriting legalese into plain English is that we may not have, we may lose something in translation.
Which I I totally agree with that aspect.
I worry about us explaining it and then explaining it wrong. I feel like that that's more dangerous.
Couldn't our lawyers help us do that?
I don't know.
Well, I think when we were talking about A C E, that's exactly what came up. And and I think the 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 alternative, the 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 solution to that was to provide the the resources that are available to parents and families to help guide them through that process. And that's what we agreed upon would be a you know, opportunity for those people to access that in a better way.
I appreciate that, and I'm telling you that as of the last page of resources that I got, most of them want to sue us as a district. It's not a great resource list to hand out to parents, especially ones who are scared and potentially angry.
Right, so it's A C E, not A C dash E, I pulled up A C dash E because I don't know. And this has a list of free or low-cost places that can help, like the Bureau of Special Ed, Disability Rights Center, the Bar Association, the Parent Information Center, and then it has the
Parent Information Center no longer does advocacy on this on a one-to-one basis.
Oh. All right.
And the first one was the woman I was telling you about earlier, who was very adamant about handing me names of lawyers.
Yeah.
Who would love to go against us.
All right.
Really hard to like establish that that's the last thing I want to ever see happen to our district because I think that's money that should be spent on the children, not in court. But that's also part of the reason why I'm so passionate about making sure that parents are understanding this. And it seems to me our policies aren't law. Obviously, when it comes to the I E Ps, that is, that's that's law, no, hands down, no questions asked, like Reagan is one hundred percent right on this one, Ms. Lampier, sorry. However, it's it seems if we're where our policies aren't law, maybe we should just start writing our policies in a way the average person can understand. Why do we need to have such fluffy writing in here? I'm not a lawyer, never pretended to be, a doctor maybe on T V.
Is this an opportunity to bring in Mr. Bennett, Mr. Alexander, Mr. Beer, because I think they're here to answer some of the questions, so would this be in?
I would love to hear from our public commenter first, if possible. I know if she doesn't want to stick around for the whole non-meeting, that's
So do we have public comments or no, just observing? Okay.
Please feel free to reach out anytime if you do have more you want to say. I know Ms. Raymond had said that you spoke earlier today and
Earl, I am right there with you.
So, yeah, so today it's interesting that this came up today because I'm also on the Child and Family Law Committee up at the State House. And today we heard a bill on another bill on restraint and seclusion. So this bill was just signed. I forget what the H B was, but anyways, this one was just signed by the governor in August. And now there's another one being put on consideration regarding videotaping. And so there was a lot of discussion at the state level about how that could work. So which is not part of this policy, although I did have some questions based on that regarding some of the things that we do with restraint and seclusion. Because it was said in testimony, I think it was the representative from Merrimack testified that that Nashua is video recording students. And I was not aware of that, and that was kind of embarrassing. So are we video recording students when we use restraint and seclusion? What about in the seclusion rooms?
No videos.
No videotapes, okay.
They're in seclusion, they're being monitored.
I have a question about the towards the end of the J K A A. It's the second to last page, J it is. And it says that review of I E P or five oh four plan following the use of restraint or seclusion. And it says, it says the school shall review the individual education program and our section five oh four plan and make adjustments. And because it because it just says the school shall review, I wasn't sure if that was a meeting that the parents were present at. And I, you know, I would think I would hope that they would be. Because it wouldn't it wouldn't generally fall into probably a regular I E P meeting. But if we're making changes to the if we're reviewing the I E P, then making adjustments, I don't know if the parents are legally are legally allowed to be there, I don't know.
If they were, if any adjustments that are made to that would be a team, a full team meeting where
So they would they would be informed of the review and they would be there too. Okay, thank you.
Having a discussion about possible next steps.
All right, thank you.
So to follow up on that, so if we, so this one says if a child receiving services under five oh four, if there are multiple instances of restraint or seclusion, oh, it says, so I'm confused about it. Does so are we automatically triggering a review or does the parent have to request it?
It automatically triggers a review.
How many times of a restraint, like every time there's a restraint or?
It says the first time.
First time.
First time.
And then the parent can ask for an evaluation if the parent feels that there have been multiple issues since the last I E P meeting. Fortunately, I don't, that's another situation where I wish that we had better resources to give that weren't so, hey, the school district is terrifying because I know I even have a hard time as a board member asking for things for like to advocate for my child. And it's I'm much more bark up here than I am at the school level when it comes to my kid. And it's because situations like this, people start saying, well, it's the law and this is what we have and this is what we can do and this is what we can't do. You get to the point where you just assume my child is bad, my child needs this, I desperately need my child to make it through this half a day. I wish that there was maybe a way that we could trigger an automatic review after so many incidents. Even if that review wasn't necessarily for the child's I E P, but maybe a review for the employee if they have so many restraints under their belt in X amount of time. Because I know that that's one of the reasons why we're really focusing on this this year is because we want to make sure those numbers are always trending down.
Or or at least that we're using restraint and seclusion appropriately, right? Because I mean, if if a child is a danger to themselves or others, something has to be done, right? Because we have to protect everybody.
No, and I mean, like
But it can't be the first step, it has to be an emergency, right? So
No, and and like I was saying earlier, you know, I've seen it it stinks getting that report, but at the same time, I do truly feel that ninety percent of our staff throughout the district are using it appropriately. I think it's just a very stubborn group that refuses any other educational tool, so therefore we need to make a policy. Thank you, guys, appreciate the extra work.
So on that question about triggering, triggering a review if we have so on under G on page seven of the policy is reporting notification and record keeping. And I think this is where we still had some questions under E under that section, which is actually right on page eight at the top. And it says the superintendent shall review and investigate each incident of seclusion and restraint or their designee, superintendent or the designee. And and determine as to whether or not they used complied with this policy. And then there'll be a written notification. And so we had some questions about who is entitled to that written notification? What does it look like? Today at the state, the representative from Merrimack said that the state has updated its form, but I couldn't find it when I looked in the technical advisories, so if there is a form, does it exist now?
We have not been made aware of the updated forms as we discussed previously.
Okay.
Still working on the previous forms that
All right, I just was curious if since last week when we met, something had shown up that I couldn't find. All right, so I guess my question is if as 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 a way to protect our our students and our staff, is there a way for us to institute, to institute what Ms. Darling was suggesting? That if we have a staff member who is having a number of restraints, how how can we as a district respond to that in a way that makes sure that the staff members performance is being reviewed and that, you know, appropriate education is happening? Or if there needs to be other kinds of actions? And then a second question on that, and I think the reason I wanted the attorney here is if we review something and we determine that the restraint was not appropriate from anything from, you know, really, this kid could have been talked down to you acted inappropriately and we need to take corrective action. How do we? What is our our best practices and what is our obligation for communicating with parents while not violating any personnel labor laws?
Can I just say something? When it comes to our personnel's privacy, the the report that we already give does give all of the staff's members inform, like which staff member was involved in all of that. So at that point, any finding that was done would not it's not like we could then redact the staff name from it after the fact.
Right, but say the staff member has to have a correction, a corrective action plan, anything from, hey, next time do it differently to I need you to take a remedial C P I training because clearly you missed something to I need to put you on administrative leave. Like typically, when a staff member goes on administrative leave, that's confidential. Like even if someone, like even the board frequently doesn't know why someone's on administrative leave until there's a grievance about it.
So it says a description of actions taken in response to those findings and conclusions. Could that description be superintendent followed policy and then use whichever one of our policies would be about how employee issues are handled? I don't know. That's why I asked Attorney Bennett to come because I don't have the answers to any of these questions.
I mean, I think this has elicited a lot of discussion on our end as well, and I think there's some good questions. And we've gone, you know, had some discussions, particularly with several principals and with Mr. Alexander about what this entails. And I think one of the things that we've had the conversation is is when we talk about in in letter G in reference to D and E. What does that mean? So in in our interpretation of it, part D is the form that parents and guardians receive notifying them of the report of of the of the restraint.
That's not in our packet, right? No, it's not.
I'm looking at
I would say it's right above on the end of page seven, D, the written information to parent.
I'm sorry, I meant the actual form isn't in our packet.
No, it's not.
That's all right, I can show you copies of what we had last year.
I don't, I honestly, I don't want to see if it has identifying information of a student because I don't want to
Darling's point, there is a lot of personal information there about who was involved. I think, you know, when when one of the when a restraint occurs internally, there is a lot of reflection that's done through the C P I process to identify what worked well, what didn't work well, what needs to be done better. I think one of the pieces that this this group wanted to identify is how does that tie in with that final investigation and report? And I think there's some, I think there's some confusion or some clarification that's necessary is what is the final final investigative report? I I would, you know, I would suggest that that final investigation and report comes when a parent or a family member questions whether or not that the restraint was appropriate, for example. And I don't think that that's very clear in what we currently provide. And I think that needs to be some clarification. So we've been going back and forth internally about what that should entail for those next steps. And I think there's been some discussion about what that should involve. Uh, and I think there's been some discussion about what that should involve. Where it gets, you know, you know, to the point that, you know, Ms. Darling did s- say before in part D, excuse me, part E, there is some personal information there that is internal. If there's a, if there is an issue, that's a personnel matter that may not be shared with the general public. But yet, I think the parent, well, you know, the parent guardian would like to know, you know, is there an issue and is it being addressed? That is an overlapping concern and that's the, kinda some of the discussions that we've had um, between, in between meetings about possible next steps, which is why I think Mr. Bennett is here along with uh, his team to talk a little bit about, you know, and to try to clarify of what we may be able to do going forward to address that. Because I think as we left that last meeting, part D and E of G were the concerns that we talked about or, or kind of alluded to. So we're trying to provide some clarity about what that should be about.
So I think, maybe it makes sense for us since Mr. Bennett is here, but because he's, because he's one of the school district attorneys, our conversations with him are protected under attorney-client privilege. So what I think we need to do is to take a recess and then have a non-meeting with our attorney with just uh, staff and board and attorney, and then come back. Does that sound good to anyone? Okay, so I don't think I need a motion, I think I can just announce that we're going to recess at seven thirteen PM. Everybody, thank you for your patience, we are back in session, oh my goodness, at eight twenty-four PM. Um, and so we were discussing uh, JKAA restraint and seclusion. And I think that um, what I would like to do is to hold this at the Policy Committee instead of sending it forward as planned, um, so that we can spend a little bit more time with um, administration coming up with some language under, oh, I, I moved my, my cursor under E on page eight uh, regarding the final report. Because we want to be clear that the board's expectation is that parents uh, be provided with uh, information about the final report and the, the findings and the, you know, steps that may or may not need to be taken as a result of, of, of a review of restraint and seclusion. Is that correct? Okay, so um, so it won't be on the calendar, it won't be on the agenda for Monday, um, which I was expecting for the second reading, so instead it will come back here in March. Um, and then we'll tighten that up. I really wanna move this forward though in March because I think it's important that all of these details get into practice as soon as possible. Alright, any other questions or issues? No, okay, great. So um, I'm just gonna leave it there, cause it's late. Uh, looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn! And second.
I'll, I'll second it. Alright, uh, all in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned at eight twenty-six PM.